All right, good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, October 15th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. We're going to begin tonight with public comments. Are there any public comments from the Board?
Yes. Yeah, it's the time of the year where everyone turns their heat on and also gets ready for the change in daylight savings time, so it's a good time to be reminded to check your smoke and fire detectors. The primary concern being carbon monoxide, you know, if you haven't used your system for the last six months, you know, you turn it on, it might cause some problems. So make sure that if you have the ones that still require you to change out the batteries, that you're checking those, and if you can upgrade to the newer ones with the longer 10-year lithium batteries, then please do so. But again, this time of the year, be sure to check your smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, are there any public comments from the public? All right, seeing none. Moving on to announcements, I don't have any, but I'll plug special town meeting, which is coming up soon, Tuesday, November 12th, 7:00 PM at the Middle High School. Any other announcements? Communications from other boards, I don't have any. Does anyone else?
No.
All right. So we're going to start tonight with the ratification of the Town Manager's appointment of Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau as interim police chief. So I'll invite up the Chief and Lieutenant. Of course, yep. So you can start if you want.
I hardly got to know one Chief when I get to start working with another one. But I've spent some time over the past eight weeks or so talking with members of the Board, other department heads, getting to know the current and retiring Chief, to understand his philosophy and his thought process, and I'm pleased to be able to bring before you tonight the nomination of the Lieutenant as your interim police chief effective 5:01 PM on this coming Friday.
All right, do you guys have anything you want to say?
Yes, please, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Terenzini, thank you, the Board, for having us again tonight. As you can see, this is tough, I didn't think this would be that emotional. But Lieutenant Thibodeau's been by my side since I became the Chief of Police here in Lunenburg, and I couldn't have asked for a better person to be my second in command. As you can see, the Department, he is well supported by the Department. A majority of them showed up here tonight. Those I couldn't had different commitments. But it shows the leadership qualities that we look for, and it shows the leadership that Lieutenant Thibodeau brings to the Department. I have nothing but the utmost faith that he's going to carry on, even if it's in the interim right now, that he'll carry on the mission, and he's going to do a fantastic job. I couldn't be happier for him and his family, knowing that his father was the Chief of Police in Shirley, and for him to take over the reins for me, it truly is an honor.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Chief Gamble, Acting Town Manager, Terenzini, and the Board. I'd like to thank my family and friends, especially the members of the Lunenburg Police Department and Lunenburg Fire Department who work hand-in-hand every day together, that really put in everyday work, and they make it look easy, but it's not. And I'd just like to thank all of them for their support tonight.
Awesome. All right, well, I'll open it up to questions and comments from the Board, starting with Select Menemke.
I just want to first thank the Chief, current Chief, and wish him well in his next chapter. I'm jealous that he gets to play as much golf as I know he will. And congratulations to Lieutenant Thibodeau.
Thank you.
So first, I want to thank Chief Gamble. I remember all the way back, way back when, this ceremony of the changing of the guard was a whole lot different than when you got promoted Sergeant. I'm glad for that, and you certainly persevered through that time, working your way up through and, you know, becoming an excellent Chief, and we thank you for your service here. It's been a pleasure of working with you for all these years, at every different level, you know, through Sergeant, Lieutenant, and then through now. And to Lieutenant Thibodeau, now soon-to-be Acting Chief, or interim Chief Thibodeau, we've worked together too. I've known you since you were appointed as well. It really is a testament to the whole Department, I say this all the time, but it really is true, the rank-and-file support of the whole Department and the town. You have big shoes to fill, but I have every confidence in you, as does the Chief, that you will do an excellent job following a strong line of Chiefs in our town. We've been very, very fortunate, and I wish you luck in that. One last comment, I feel like I'm in like the safest room in Lunenburg. And to everybody watching outside, look at your Ring cameras for the next 15 minutes till everybody gets back on the road, okay? But thank you both very much.
Thank you.
We're going to do both?
Yes.
Okay. I have two statements, and I wrote them down because I don't want to get emotional, so I'm going to read them. It's my honor tonight to be officially part of welcoming Jeff Thibodeau as hopefully very soon with our vote, Acting Chief of Lunenburg Police Department. Jeff's been an integral part of the Department's leadership team since 2020, when he became the Lieutenant, working closely with Chief Gamble to guide the Department throughout important initiatives and challenges. Before serving as Lieutenant, Jeff spent many years as Detective Sergeant, building a deep understanding of both investigative work and the needs of the community. His time in that role gave him invaluable experience and allowed him to form strong bonds with the officers, making him not only a respected leader, but also a trusted colleague within the Department. Having had the privilege of working with Jeff for many years, I've always appreciated his steady leadership and thoughtful approach to problem-solving. His commitment to the Department is unwavering, and I know he will bring the same passion and dedication to the new role. I'm fully confident that this will be a smooth transition with the Department in great hands under Jeff's leadership. I look forward to working alongside Acting Chief Thibodeau as we continue to build on the strong foundation that's already in place. Jeff, congratulations, and thank you for your continued service.
Thank you.
Should I do my Chief one now, or after?
Up to you.
Okay. We're going to, I'm going to do them both, so I don't have to talk again. Chief, it feels surreal being here tonight, recognizing your retirement, and if I'm being honest, I'd sort of rather not be doing it, and I wish you weren't leaving. I've known you since I was a kid, and it's hard to imagine this town without you at the helm of the Department. As a friend, I couldn't be happier for you and Ellen as you begin this next chapter, but as a Select Board member and someone who's worked alongside with you for the many, past many years, I'm going to really miss you. Your work in Lunenburg has been nothing but short of remarkable. From leading the Department to earn accreditation through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, to building strong relationships with our schools, you've left a lasting impact that has made both the Department and the community stronger. Beyond Lunenburg, you've also been a leader across the region, serving as President of Central Mass Chiefs of Police and as a member of the Municipal Police Training Committee, helping to shape the future of policing across Massachusetts. Personally, I want to thank you for always being there, not just as my colleague, but as a friend. Your support has meant the world to me, and that's not changing. Your phone number will be staying at the top of my list, and your tee times are going to have to wait when I call. I'll still be calling, and you better believe I'm planning on dropping by in Hilton Head. Tom, your legacy of leadership integrity and friendship will stay with us long after you retire. You've given so much to this town and the profession. Now it's time to enjoy every moment of what comes next. You've earned it.
Chief Gamble, I want to thank you for your service to our community. Being a police officer, you see the best and the worst of what the community has to offer, and you've approached the job with clear-headedness, with a sense of determination. I've really respected the work that you've done for our community. You know, it's hard coming after a mannequin, she's worked with you pretty directly, but I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for the work you've done for the town of Lunenburg. It is appreciated, and you will be missed. And to Thibodeau, as you know, you know, I think you've earned the right to be in front of us tonight. I think that you've demonstrated over your career very clearly leadership abilities. I think you, you know, it's obvious that, you know, you have the support of the Department, and you've got the opportunity to learn underneath Chief Gamble, underneath Chief Marino, you know, quite directly. And I think that all these things will enable you to be very effective in this role. So it's with a lot of pleasure that I will support the ratification of your interim appointment, and I know that we're going to be engaged in a process to identify the full-time, the permanent placement. I won't comment on that today, but I think that you are fully qualified to do the role that we're about to ratify you to be appointed into.
Thank you.
All right, before we ratify the appointment, Chief Gamble, we would like to honor your time with the town. Whereas Chief Thomas L. Gamble has honorably served the town of Lunenburg for 24 years, beginning his career in 2000 and steadily rising through the ranks, earning promotions to Sergeant in 2003, Lieutenant in 2018, and ultimately Chief of Police in 2020. Whereas under Chief Gamble's leadership, the Lunenburg Police Department earned accreditation through the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission, reflecting his dedication to the highest standard of professionalism, accountability, and operational excellence. Whereas Chief Gamble worked tirelessly to strengthen the relationship between the Police Department and the Lunenburg Schools, fostering trust, collaboration, and a shared commitment to ensuring a safe environment for students, faculty, and families. Whereas beyond his service to Lunenburg, Chief Gamble has held key leadership roles in the law enforcement community, including serving as President of the Central Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association and as a member of the Municipal Police Training Committee, contributing to the development of training standards and practices that enhance the quality of policing across the Commonwealth. Whereas throughout his career, Chief Gamble has served as a mentor, role model, and leader to officers within the Department, earning the respect of colleagues and the trust of the community through his integrity, compassion, and dedication. Whereas after 24 years of exemplary service, Chief Thomas L. Gamble will officially retire on October 18th, 2024, leaving a lasting legacy of public service, leadership, and community engagement that will continue to benefit the town for years to come. Now therefore, the Lunenburg Select Board does hereby proclaim October 18th, 2024, as Chief Thomas L. Gamble Day, in the town of Lunenburg, Massachusetts, in honor of his distinguished career and extends its deepest gratitude for his many contributions to the safety and well-being of our community. Furthermore, the Select Board encourages all residents to join in celebrating Chief Gamble's remarkable career and expressing heartfelt appreciation for his leadership, vision, and commitment to the people of Lunenburg. And witness thereof, we have hereon to set our hands and cause the seal of the town of Lunenburg to be affixed on this day, October 15th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the kind words, the citation. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the men and women of my Police Department. They are truly the backbone of what I've been able to accomplish without the collaboration I had with them, without their true dedication, the hard work to our community and to our Department. We wouldn't be having this conversation right now. So all the praise goes to them. I can't thank the community enough for allowing me to serve this community. I am truly humbled and honored to be able to be a part of this community and lead this Police Department. It'll forever hold a special place in my heart. I've worked with many Boards, and I've appreciated every minute that I've had to work, shouldn't say had to, but work with the Boards through the pitfalls and through the celebrations. It's been good. I've enjoyed my career, and I've enjoyed this ride, and I can't thank you enough for this moment. But truly, this is a remarkable day, but this is truly a moment for Lieutenant Thibodeau too, and I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I better say this because I know my wife is watching, but I would hate to forget her, truly, because if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't be standing in front of you right now. Between her and my family, my children, Thomas, Cackle, and Alyssa, my parents, I wouldn't be before you. I wouldn't be the person I am today without them and without their support. And I wish everybody here the best of luck in the upcoming budget season, my Department, my younger officers, a long career and rewarding career. It really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, so we're going to ratify the appointment. First, you can come up though, if you want. So a couple notes about how this motion has to be made. It has to be effective on October 18th at 5:01 PM, and we also need to include in the motion to authorize the interim Town Manager to sign the contract. So with that said, is there a motion?
Sure. I move to ratify the appointment of Lieutenant Jeffrey Thibodeau as interim Lunenburg Chief of Police effective October 18th at 5:01 PM, and also authorize the interim Town Manager to sign the contract as approved by the Select Board.
Second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. I, Jeffrey Thibodeau, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties incumbent on me as the interim police chief and the agent to the license and authority for the town of Lunenburg. According to the best of my ability and understanding, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the Police Department, the Constitution, and the laws of the United States, and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and under rules, regulations, and ordinance, or bylaws of my municipal employer made under the authority therefore, so help me God. Thank you.
Can we get some photos? Yes, yep. All right, we'll take a photo.
Chief?
Yep. All right, so we'll just go into a brief recess for, let's say, five minutes. We'll take some pictures. I'm going to give this to the former Chief now, and we'll be back in a couple minutes.
Because I want to capture this.
All right, thank you. All right, have a good night, everyone. We'll wait a couple minutes for people to leave, and then we'll resume the rest of the meeting. Good night.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to continue on with the agenda now. Let's see, what do we have next? We have a toll booth request with the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg for October 26th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, with a rain date of October 27th. Is anyone here from the Boys and Girls Club? I don't think so.
Here, I'm Katie White.
Oh, okay, hi. Sorry, I didn't see you on Zoom.
That's okay. Lisa Gambardella is on there as well.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that. What'd you say?
Lisa Gambardella is also here from the Board.
Okay, cool. So it looks like we have all the paperwork. Do you just want to introduce what this request is for?
Choosing event for the Boys and Girls Club. It looks like voluntary toll in the center of town. You already mentioned the dates and the times. The Police Department and DPW were notified as well. Not sure what other questions you might have for us.
Sure. So we have it on the paperwork that it's in support of the after-school program scholarships?
Yes.
All right, awesome. So I'll open it up to the Board if there are any questions or comments.
No, no questions.
I believe this is just, they have two a year. The last one was in April, May, and this one is always usually, is this the date of homecoming?
No, I think it's the week after.
Week after? Okay. Anyway, it's pretty common. They've been doing this for years. I have no further questions or comments.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the toll booth request for the Boys and Girls Club on October 26th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM with a rain date of October 27th at Town Center.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, thank you guys for joining via Zoom.
Thank you.
And up next, we have another toll booth request with the Salvation Army for December 14th, also 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and this one's at Main Street and also the CVS on Electric Ave.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, we were requesting the Salvation Army to do the toll booth. We do it every year, to bring joy to families less fortunate and unable to have Christmas, and all this money that we collect goes and stays into the communities throughout the year, programs of music, food pantry, summer fund programs, free after-school stuff for the children, the gift of music. So this really is a driving force for us to be able to do all of this in the community. The Salvation Army Fitchburg serves Fitchburg, Lemonster, and Lunenburg, and it's with great joy to say that, you know, a lot of time and preparation goes into the holidays for these children, and we're grant asking for permission to do the toll booth.
All right, awesome. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Are we also going to get the giving tree this year as well?
Yes, that was my next question. I always come back with that, but I have a meeting with Carter to talk about what the Salvation Army does in the community, and let him know all the enrichment programs such as the Good Neighbor Energy Fund that helps pay utilities and people that are going through a difficult time. So I look forward to that meeting, but the request is also to have a tree put in at the Town Hall so that people can take angels to buy gifts and bring them back.
Awesome. Any other questions?
No questions, but I will say that I cannot overstate the importance of the work that the Salvation Army does year-round, not just at Christmas when most people know them. Ms. Valentine has been here in front of us many, many years, a real mainstay at the local chapter. All the money raised stays in, you know, in the local chapters here. So the work they do, I've seen firsthand, is enormous for people who are less fortunate, and I cannot support this strongly enough.
All right, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the toll booth request for the Salvation Army, December 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, both in Town Center and at the intersection of Whalen Road and Electric Ave at the CVS there.
Second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good to see you, Lynette.
All right, so we're going to jump down now to appointment to the Agricultural Commission, Kathy Dugan. Am I saying that correctly? Dugan, okay, thank you. Term to expire June 30th, 2027. So Kathy, I'll invite you up and just ask you to introduce yourself and talk to us a little bit about why you want to serve on the Agricultural Commission.
I'm Kathy Dugan, and I, my husband and I own Tipton Farm over on Page Street. We bought it four years ago now. Prior to that, we had a small family farm in Lancaster. And I have always been involved in agricultural education through 4H. I've been a 4H leader for over 20 years. And I feel very strongly about the importance of agriculture in our community and not losing that connection to where our food comes from, and helping other people realize that. So, do you have any questions for me?
And you did attend the last Agricultural Commission meeting, and I believe they voted unanimously to recommend your appointment. All right, awesome.
Yep.
Any questions or comments from the Board?
Thank you for stepping, stepping forward.
No problem.
Yes, I would say the same, and certainly you have exactly the background that was envisioned when we created an Ag Commission. So hopefully you will continue your good work with that commission as well as on your own, on your own farm.
I echo what my colleagues have said. Thank you for stepping up, and I'm sure you're going to be a fantastic addition.
Same. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep, all of that. So hold on one second, we'll finalize it. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make it. I move to ratify the appointment of Kathy Dugan to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Just point of order, I think it's, we are appointing them, it's not a ratification.
Thank you. I'll withdraw that motion, and I'll say it again. I move to appoint Kathy Dugan to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one last thing, I know, sorry. So it sounds like you are already in contact with the Commission, so they're going to help you with onboarding, but one thing, just make sure you go down to the Town Clerk's Office so you can get sworn in.
Okay.
Yep. All right, awesome. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, so we do have a public hearing. It's scheduled for 7:50. I want to apologize to the applicants here. We got through all of the appointments and the ceremony that we had way quicker than I thought we would, so unfortunately, we're going to have to wait until 7:50. So if you guys don't mind just hanging out a little bit, and we'll get to that public hearing at 7:50. All right, so we're going to jump down to the interim Town Manager report.
The contract has been executed for the library exterior paint project, and the second DPW salt contract has been signed by the vendor and is working its way through internal signatures here. The tree cutting services, part of which are funded The tree cutting services, part of which are funded by ARPA, were due on October 10. The bid came in a bit over the anticipated budget, but we will award a contract based on our good faith estimate and keep the project under 50,000 so we don't have to go out to formal bidding. We have the DPW garage flooring due next week and the DPW partial roof replacement, as well as the sewer manhole rehabilitation. We have at least one addendum we'll be issuing this week on the flooring project. We'll wait to see if there are any other questions that we receive by Thursday. I believe they're due. The library teen room bid is out and is due in November 4 at 10. The municipal building design proposals are due in, on that same date, as are the Town Hall roof replacement and chimney restoration bids due those, on those dates. You can see that both Mr. Ruth and Ms. Bellevue, we've been keeping them busy here the last couple of weeks. The data collection services contract with Vision has cleared through Town Council and is awaiting the vendor's signature. And the payroll services, RFP, I think we reported to last week, there's been a, a meeting on that, and that's ready to be released. We expect that to be released next week. 925 Mass Ave is pending Town Council's comments and clarification as to the impact, if any, on the recent court decision on the proceeds of tax, which we spoke to you a little bit in the proposed rewrite of your tax foreclosure policy. And the audio update, the equipment has been ordered for this room, and we'll try to get an installation date for you at tomorrow's staff meeting. The Town Manager job posting has been submitted by Community Paradigm on the MMA site, Town's website, and we have been in touch with Mr. Petron, Mr. Lynch on potential candidates. We think they might want to contact, and we are hopeful of a robust response to that. The Council on Aging Director, it was kind of, I had a bit of a moment with Chief Gamble retiring because I wasn't able to meet with Ms. Doherty today because she was at the Retirement Board working on her paperwork, and we're certainly going to miss her, but that position has been posted now. And we anticipate being able to do interviews the first week of November. The Fire Chief Muir and the Council on Aging Chair will do the initial screening. We are including user agencies in this, in these screenings. We need to formalize that process, which we'll, we'll task Julie with when she gets a little bit of breath. But I think, Mr. Alonso, you've spoken to that. I know other board committee members have as, as well, and we'll make sure that gets codified before my departure. We do have vacancies for videographers. The position hours vary, but it's a great way to not only learn a bit more about the, the craft and serve the community. We had some unfortunate news on the sewer business manager in that we had made a tender, but they've been responsive to our tender, and so the position remains open, as do the assistant to the sewer business manager. And the administrative assistant, assessing assistant remains open. That's been reposted both on the Mass Association of Assessing Officers, MMA, and other various sites that we can find. I attended the Finance Committee this past Thursday to review the draft warrant. They had a number of questions that we have spooled out, and I believe I copied you on that earlier today to various departments, so we can get them, their answers in time for their October 24 public hearing. They are holding their formal recommendation votes onto that evening. I'll do my very best to get them published in the booklet being mailed out, if we can get that done within the time limits. Otherwise, it might have to be a single page of their recommendations that we have at the night of the town meeting. I did draw the task of preparing the finance terms for the booklet, so I'll get to that this week. Finance Committee was down its membership and wasn't exactly sure what they wanted to do, so I think, I'm not sure if I volunteered or was voluntold, but in any ways, I'll, I'll get that done this week and circulate that. Most of the other efforts this week, frankly, were on some personnel matters where I ended up being the last resort that I've shared with you, dealing with a number of public records requests and then finalizing the draft warrant. We do have the boards and committees with the Ag Commission now down to two with your recent appointment, Architectural Preservation District Commission, and they'll have an active discussion possibly at the town meeting, which we hope will draw some interest in membership. Board of Health Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Finance Committee. I believe, Mr. Alonso, we're down to two vacancies now as of this evening.
We did appoint somebody, the Finance Committee Appointment Committee didn't meet an interview and appoint somebody just this evening, yes.
Excellent. And the Green Communities, as well as the Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, the Master Plan Steering Committee, Public Access Cable Committee. Each of these committees are able to function with, with quorum, so that is good news, but we certainly encourage anyone that has any interest in those to reach out to us. Also, if anyone has any questions about these jobs, I've actually gotten some texts about the Council on Aging. We're trying to respond to any individual person in as much detail as we can. So if someone out there is interested and it says 19 hours, what days of the week, how does that work? Please feel free to reach out to our office directly, and I'll either connect you with the right department head or address it as best we can between Julie and myself.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Just so it does not drop off the radar, Personnel Committee is not on here, which has no members.
Thank you, sir.
So five vacancies for the Personnel Committee as well. All right, looks like that was the end of the report. Are there any questions for Carter?
I have some comments. So I just want to thank you, Carter, for that report, and I just want to make an acknowledgement to Julie, to Annie, to Cara, and to Chris Ruth. I think that we can see the amount of work that has been going on in the office, and, you know, it's a tremendous load for Julie. I know Annie and, you know, Cara keeping everything updated, and then a lot of these projects, as you made reference to tonight, fall in some way underneath Chris Ruth. And so, you know, I just want to acknowledge the staff for the work that they're doing to help push all these things forward. So thank you for that report.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so we'll jump down to old business, status update and discussion on ARPA. Other than what the project updates you mentioned in the report, are there any other updates?
Not really. We did get the bid in on the tree, which met target, and we have the, quite a few coming up in the next seven days or so here. I'll be able to give you a much better picture after that.
All right. Any questions or comments for Carter on ARPA?
I believe all ARPA projects are now out to bid.
I have a question. So we know that the Parks received a million dollars in ARPA funding, and, you know, I strongly support the project that they've created. But, you know, speaking with one of the former members, and this is the question through you, Mr. Chairs, to the interim Town Manager, speaking with one of the previous members of the Parks Commission, you know, there seemed to be that assurance that due to the vote that the town took at town meeting, that there was a, that the funds could be considered committed even if not directly under contract. So I want to just verify that, that we are 100% sure that there's no other steps we need to take regarding the parks, so that way we don't accidentally find ourselves in a position where we lose those funds, and specifically the Parks, who's worked so hard on this, the Park Commissioners, that they don't lose these funds.
I posed that question to Town Council, I think about 10 days ago. He is on vacation this week, and his attention really was focused on the warrant and some other matters, but I will reach out to him again and move that up to the top of the list.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on ARPA tonight? All right, so we're going to move down to current business, approval of the state election warrant. So I have this here, this is for the election in May. We signed the warrant for pretty much all of them. You guys don't need me to read through it, do you?
We usually look at it before we sign it.
Yeah, okay. I can pass it down if you guys want to review it first.
Oh, there's usually multiples.
Yep.
Are there multiples?
Yep, they're all in there.
Would it be okay if I just take one and pass it?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
Any commentary on the warrant? I know members are very diligently reviewing it right now.
Do we know if, when it comes to the actual, I know that when it comes to the actual ballot, I mean, this is looking like more than a front and back ballot, but are, do we know if the summaries get removed from the ballot, if those are provided separate, or if everyone's being given two ballots, or, because this is a little lengthier than what we're used to seeing. Do we know?
That's a good question. Let me see if there's a sample ballot on the state website yet.
I haven't, I did request a ballot, I haven't opened it.
Yeah.
They mailed to me, but I haven't opened it. It doesn't impact the whether or not I will sign.
Yeah. I know in the past when there's like a lot of ballot initiatives and there's lengthy language, the ballot is just like, I don't know, very large, but there's still one individual ballot. I don't think I've.
All right, I've never seen more than one.
Yeah.
I don't think the summary, I mean, this is up to the Town Clerk. I don't think the summaries go on. I think just the yes or no votes go.
Okay.
What the explanation is.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, is there a motion to approve it?
I move that we approve the state election warrant as it was distributed to us.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll sign that later. All right, so we are going to skip over special town meeting warrant for now so that we aren't interrupted when we're doing that. So we'll do review and potential vote on proposed amendments to Select Board Policies and Procedures, Tax Title Policy and Procedure. So for the members who weren't here last week, we did an initial glance at it, and basically, if you haven't reviewed this, the process for properties, the tax titled properties, there's part of it where they will basically submit a report to the Select Board regarding properties that we may or may not decide to sell, and that part of the process is not explicitly defined in our policies. So they're recommending that we add it.
We reviewed this last week, right?
Yep.
And with it, I think there were some modifications?
Uh, yes. With respect to the form that the treasure collector would use, the original said on a form to be designed by them, we changed that to be treasure collector, to make it clear. And we went on to say, which shall request, we added the word information not only as to the desire to retain the property, but the reasons therefore, correcting a spelling error on the therefore, the plan to manage the property and the potential costs thereof. And that was the extent of the revisions I was given last week.
I was, I think we held it off because we wanted a full board. I was fine with that. With those changes included, I was fine with the policy amendment or amendments.
Michael Reyer, Amanda, since you guys weren't here last week, how's it look to you guys?
I reviewed it, I think it's fine.
I think it's straightforward, no objection.
All right, is there a motion then?
Move that we adopt the proposed amendments to the Select Board Policies and Procedures, Section 3.08 Tax Title Policy and Procedure as presented and written.
Second.
One question. This goes to Town Council for review first? This hasn't gone yet, has it?
I don't normally send policies like this to council. I can if you'd like.
This is just a process, an internal process for what we do.
I thought we talked about it last week, that it would be reviewed, no?
This, no.
I don't remember.
Yeah, this is just an internal process.
But I certainly can send it along to them if the board would like.
Okay. All right, any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. So for the rest of current business, we have discussion on annual climate survey policy and discussion on Select Board and Town Manager goal-setting process. So we're not actually going to discuss it. I really added it as standing agenda item so that we're tracking it and aware of it, so that we can start thinking about it going into our workshop on the 29th. So these are.
Which I will not be able to attend, unfortunately.
Okay.
I cannot be here on the 29th.
That's fine.
For clarification, you, you're calling another meeting at the end of the month?
Yeah, I mean, we discussed it like several times, so.
My general opinion is I think that it's healthy for the board to get a break. You know, I think that this would essentially put us in a three-month cycle of meeting every week, which becomes a little more problematic, I think, on an individual level, because we, I tend to plan, you know, that I have that Tuesday off, certain things, you know, so when it's not available, this becomes a little more challenging. So I'm, I can't confirm if I'm also available on the 29th. I'll have to get back to you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Well, we did discuss, I believe, three times now before I put it on here, so if we want to revisit that, that's fine, I get people like their breaks, so, all right. All right, we've got a couple more minutes, so if we want to jump down to minutes warrants and action items, so there are minutes from executive sessions from August 20, 2019, October 8, 2019, and November 5, 2019. They're in the drive. One thing that I will note is that Mark Terry, our Labor Council, did review them, and he okayed them before they were added here. Have we had a chance to review them yet?
I have.
I have not.
Okay.
I also wasn't here in, in February.
I know that. I know.
So I, I have a clarifying question.
Sure.
So you, and, and this is to, I think, the Town Manager and to Selectman Alonso, I thought that we needed to meet in executive session to approve minutes from executive session, because we can't really discuss what's in these minutes in an open session.
You do not need to meet in executive session unless you think there's going to be substantive discussion about the minutes. So we can certainly, if you would like to follow that practice, I was not aware of that, but there are many communities that simply present them in open public session when they believe they will be pretty much a straightforward approval. But whatever the board wishes that policy to be, we can certainly follow it. It's not in your operating rules that I saw, but we certainly could add that.
Well, my, and please, Mr. In, you know, Mr. Terenzini, correct me. My understanding is if we're approving the executive session minutes, we're approving them to be public at that point.
They're separate actions.
Okay, so these are just approving minutes? Okay.
That's, that's exactly right. You would have to subsequently approve to release them.
Okay, gotcha. All right.
Go ahead.
So would we prefer to review executive session minutes in executive session?
I don't have anything to discuss in them, so to me, approving them here, as the interim Town Manager indicated, I have no issue with. If somebody else does, that's, I won't speak for them.
No, I, I don't have an issue. I, I think only probably two members in the current board were present for.
Right.
Most of these, but we will need a majority of us to agree to approve them.
So we have discussed, I know, we sort of have avoided having members who weren't present during the meetings vote on the minutes.
Well, this is an exception here.
I know, obviously, but we did have, and I'm mentioning this because I specifically remember that you weren't here for the meeting that we were talking about it. But in terms of statute, it's not required. If you don't attend the meeting, you can vote on it, and we sort of took a straw poll of where members of the board were at, and people thought that it would be okay. So we kind of. So we kind of have just started voting, even if we weren't present for the meetings. So, all right. Do we want more time to review these?
No.
I mean, yeah, they came in too late for me to read them for tonight. Other people have read them. I can abstain.
Yep. I mean, labor council has okayed them. He reviewed them. He was present, so. All right, is there a motion?
Are you okay with?
Yes.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from August 20th, October 8th, and November 5th, all of 2019.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
All right. Motion passes four zero to one. All right, so we're going to jump back up to the public hearing for the transfer of a general on-premise alcohol license, common vic license, automatic amusement license, et cetera, to St. Mary and Christ Incorporated, located One Main Street. And this is continued from October 1st. So I will have the clerk read the public hearing notice and I'll invite the applicant up.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Hold on one second.
Do you want to read it again, even though it's a continuation?
Uh, yes.
The old date or the new date? Sorry.
Oh, it has the old date on it. Well, yes, that's okay because it's still, it's continued, so.
Okay. The Lunenburg Licensing Authority will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 1st, 2024, continued tonight, October 15th, at seven, originally 7:05, now 7:50 p.m. on the application submitted by St. Mary and Christ, Inc. for the transfer of an all-alcoholic license, all-alcoholic beverages, general on-premise license, common victular, jukebox, and weekday entertainment license located at One Main Street, Lunenburg, Massachusetts. The premise is described as a single-story lobby, takeout counter, bar area, 22-by-20-foot outdoor patio, main dining area, women's restrooms, office, storage area, order area, and cook kitchen.
All right. So I specifically remember during our last public hearing that we wanted both co-owners here tonight.
Yeah.
And I was informed that he would be here, so I just wanted to ask.
It's actually the, my partner is not here, but he have a reason, have a.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to ask you to just speak into the microphone.
I have the paperwork, if you want to. He have like oral surgery today and he can come in and he have double.
All right. All right, so that was one of the things. I know I saw the paperwork. We saw the workers' comp. So you guys got workers' comp?
I get all that last Tuesday, as you guys tell me.
Okay. And the tip certification, I saw for one person?
All of them, except, all of them plus two partners.
But for the applicants?
Yeah.
So both of you are tip certified?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I will pass it to the board for questions and comments.
Any particular order?
Yes. Selectman M. Key?
Yeah, come back.
All right. If you have questions now, you can go.
I just had one. I was just reading a memo that we received from our executive assistant. Do you have the list of employees?
Yes.
You do?
My comment, I don't have many. I, I think an alcohol license is pretty serious and, you know, I don't have any con, I drink alcohol, I consume alcohol. I have no problem with people consuming alcohol, zero. I think as a matter of business, I think that the information you've provided is clear. Looking at the application, all the questions I had last time, I think, have been appropriately answered. And, and I, you know, I'm familiar, I know Al and I trust that, you know, as outlined in our memo, that the training will occur, no problem. I strongly believe that when we have an applicant come before us, that they need to be before us. We made the request last time for, you know, what, that, that, we wanted applicants to be here. I know that you've provided us some handwritten note that says that he had oral surgery or something, but I mean, this isn't like a, to me, this is a business matter. And if you have oral surgery, that's understandable. It happens. It usually doesn't.
Can even talk to, yeah.
So I'm, I'm interested in Ahmad being here, so for that reason, I'm not going to support the application.
He was try hard to come in with me today, but he can't even speak.
I would have preferred to see Ahmad here for this application.
He wanna come in even not talking, but he have anesthesia.
Yep. Did he have, did he also have oral surgery at the meeting two weeks ago?
I'm sorry?
Did he have oral surgery at the meeting two weeks ago?
Today.
Okay. So it was today.
And I have the paperwork for that.
All right.
All right. Any other questions?
Can I see the paperwork?
You can.
I'll pass it.
Look, I don't want to have discussions about people's healthcare, so I'm not going to get into that.
So I wasn't at the October 1st meeting, but I watched the recording. If I remember right, the questions then were, the employees, were they tip certified? The workers' comp? Were there any other outstanding questions that I'm forgetting?
It was just the other, the presence of the other applicant.
Yeah.
Well, it was the policy, but.
The alcohol policy.
The alcohol policy. There was the hours that it was going to be were not presented. And we kept getting, saying, well, everything is going to be the same as it was, but nothing was in writing.
Can I see that?
Yeah.
And the two owners, you're 50/50?
Yeah, they are, yeah.
Is a tip certification for you and Ahmad in here?
Yeah, there's included for any, to send it to any.
Let me just see where they put it here.
I saw one of them. I didn't see the other.
I got mine last week, but I'm not printing it, but I have something to say. I already passed the tests, if you want to, and I just not printed yet. You still need it or? It's my partner, my partner, he send his.
Yep.
And I already did mine last week, but I don't have the paperwork for it.
All right.
Now, yours is in here.
Is it? It's just not together?
It's page 44, 43.
All right, I see. All right, thank you.
It is?
Yeah, I hear.
What page is that?
43, 44. And the.
So again, not, not to talk about people's healthcare, but I was under the impression that your co-owner was going to be here tonight, that he's been in the, he was in the office yesterday or very recently.
He was have a plan to come in with me, but he was sick in the morning when he get to the, to the appointment. He have to making surgery. He wanna even come in, but not talking. I have anesthesia, can't even drive it.
Okay.
May I say something just briefly?
You can. Yeah, if you want to just come up to the microphone.
Okay. Al Wernick, owner of Bad Larry's. Mr. Tadros has purchased two of my other businesses, so I know that he's a rep, I'm speaking on his behalf because he can't be here. And I know that's not policy and you need to talk to him. However, he's not here. He has purchased two of my other businesses and been successful with them. This is, he's, this is the third one he's, he'll be purchasing from me. I've never had an issue with him. He's mostly going to be a financial partner of this establishment, not, he's the working partner. So Mr. Tadros will be limited as far as what his role will be because he has other businesses as well, kind of what, so David here is actually going to be the managing partner of the business. He'll be there full-time, all the time. Mr. Tadros is, again, going to be more of the financier, fill in when necessary. So I just wanted to explain the rules and exactly what's going on. I know that doesn't forgive him for not being here. And like you said, you don't want to speak on medical conditions. My emergencies happen and, you know, I'm just hoping that the board will consider this, take this under consideration, you know, that I've known this gentleman now for four years and I've never had an issue with him personally. Like I said, he's purchased two of my other businesses from me because he knows I do a good job, so.
All right. Well, thank you for adding that. You know, it's good to know that you trust him. You've worked with him previously, but, you know, especially with alcohol licenses, you know, we really need to meet with all the co-owners that are applying for a license. And, you know, I feel that way. I know Michael Ray has voiced that same sentiment. To the rest of the board, how do you guys feel about this, at this point?
Well, I will say that I certainly think that alcohol and, you know, alcohol licenses are serious and I certainly, I don't know why your partner wasn't here last week or two weeks ago, but he knew that we needed, we wanted him here.
He have a plan to come in today, but it's a reason happened, you know?
I understand what happened today. But that doesn't explain why he wasn't here when, at the beginning of this, two weeks ago, when this whole started.
Actually, he came in last Tuesday. I was supposed to be meeting too.
No.
But yeah, for paperwork and then she tell me the manager is not here yet. I was in the morning, so both of us was here.
No, no, for this meeting.
Yeah.
With this board I'm talking about.
Yeah.
We met two weeks ago.
Yeah.
For the first time.
Yeah, and then the next week.
And he wasn't at that one.
I mean, last Tuesday, was supposed to be meeting with someone in the morning, eight thirty, and we showing up in a time and Ms. Annie, she take all the paperwork and she say, wherever who's can I take the paperwork and meeting with us is not here yet. So he showing up last Tuesday and he have a plan to come in today.
That's for the town. I'm talking about for this, this hearing.
Yeah. You wanna like making like, like video shared with him? If you wanna talk to him?
Sorry, what?
Like video shared, FaceTime. Talking to him was a camera.
I don't think that would be a good substitute, in my opinion.
What about joining the Zoom? Was that not?
I, well, he says that the other person can't speak, so I, I don't know what FaceTiming and Zoom is going to do today.
I also have to say, just for the record, that getting two handwritten notes that, to me, and I don't mean to be impolite, but to me, look like excusing somebody for not doing their homework, which is the equivalent of what it seemed like, is not a professional way to submit a letter or anything, any kind of documentation. That being said, I would begrudgingly approve this, but barely, but barely. Because I don't think this is the way to approve, approach a license. I don't think this is the right seriousness to approach an alcohol license.
All right. Selectman M. Key, where are you at?
Can I ask a question? If you have an emergency today before you come into the meeting and you can't make it, what are you gonna do? It's the same thing happen here.
I'm, I'm not saying that emergency doesn't happen, but it doesn't explain why he wasn't here for the first meeting.
Yeah. He, he can't make it because he was have another business, so.
So his other business is more important than this new business.
I mean, when emergencies happen, sometimes people just reschedule.
Right.
They say, hey, something came up. I had this emergency. I'm sorry. You know, you could, I mean, I don't think this happened based on the times of that paperwork. This was this morning. Could have reached out to the office and said, hey, one of us isn't going to be there. Should we reschedule?
Who is this been? The whole day in the hospital?
Okay.
That's why, yeah.
My, my point is I think that we all experience emergencies, like they come up. And sometimes you can't do what you, you can't be where you're supposed to be at, so you recommit. And, and I'm okay with the recommitment.
I'm sorry, the recommitment as in coming again?
Rescheduling.
Rescheduling.
So both, both owners can be here?
Yeah, Renee?
Yeah, I'm in favor of, of rescheduling.
Okay. Amanda?
I hate to hold up a sale of a business, you know, that's hurting someone else. I don't know if there, is there a way that we can do a contingent approval upon the other applicant meeting with the town manager or something? I don't know if that's.
We could approve everything but the alcohol. I mean, and that allows the food service to keep going, everything else to happen. It just, the only thing that stops is the alcohol.
Which is what I said last week, too.
Didn't you do that last meeting?
No, I suggested that we could do that, but instead we did it here. But again, I would be for that.
Yeah, I would be comfortable with that and then rescheduling the liquor license portion of it. At least that can move something forward. I don't know if that's helpful.
They have several requests, so I'm okay with all the other ones.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as well. All right. Is there a motion?
Sure, I'll make it. Let me get the business name correct. All right. I move to approve the transfer of the common vic license, automatic amusement license, jukebox license, weekday entertainment license to St. Mary and Christ, Inc., located at One Main Street.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? I just have to put this out there. So I got a text from Annie, right, our executive assistant, and she says that your partner called her and had a phone conversation with her at approximately 2:00 p.m. and confirmed that he would be here. So I guess I'm just a little confused. But, all right.
Did it include, I didn't, I didn't follow the list because I didn't have the hearing notice up. I just want to make sure we included everything except the all-alcohol license.
Yep. I, what I said was common vic, automatic amusement, jukebox, weekday entertainment license.
And general on-premise, right?
I didn't say in general on-premise. I'll amend to add in general on-premise.
Second.
Any additional discussion?
I just want to add that knowing that information, it makes me less comfortable moving forward because those are two different things, but, okay.
All right. Well, motions remain and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes unanimously.
So I would move that we continue this public hearing for the conclusion of the all-alcohol beverages license. When can we do that? Is there an opening next week to do this?
Yeah, there can be, but depends on availability. Do you think you guys are going to be able to come back in next week?
As for me, I.
Yep. So do you want us to schedule it tentatively for next week? And if we need to push it back further, we can.
Okay.
If it's not next week, then the next meeting available would be November 5th.
Yep.
It's too much delete, you know, it's.
Excuse me?
It's too much delete. It's, you say November 1st?
No, no, next week.
Next week?
We can do it next week.
As long as Megan.
Or.
Yeah. Can make it.
Our next, if you can't do next week, the next meeting we have is November 5th.
So the reason to delete for next week, you just need to see the other partner?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'll let him know.
All right, was there a second?
A second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Oh, we should put a time up before you do it. So next, so we'll say, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until next Tuesday, October 21st, oh, 22nd, sorry. At what time do you want to make it, Mr. Chair?
Well, I, I mean, I don't, I've never seen a vote to continue on with a time before.
No, you have to, you have to have a time.
You do a date and time, but I'm going to suggest to you, after you get through this applicant, that you change it to start your public hearings at 7:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as the agenda permits.
Okay.
There's a number of towns that do that. And what it does is it takes all this, you know, sliding out of the. So I think that if we did it for 7:15 and then we're able to discuss a different approach, that that would work.
Right. So I would move that we continue this public hearing until next Tuesday, October 22nd at 7:15 PM.
Second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. All right, the motion passes unanimously, and we will tentatively see you here next Tuesday at 7:15 PM.
If we're not gonna be here, I'll make sure we call and reschedule.
All right.
I apologize to the board again.
That's okay.
Thank you both, all of you very much.
Yep, have a good day.
Did I have to be here, to both of us?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. Both of you have to be here next Tuesday at 7:15 PM.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. So we're gonna move on to review and approval of the special town meeting warrant. So we're gonna just jump right into it, and I'll share my screen, too, so the public can read along on the warrant. So traditionally, what we do is we go through, we either recommend approval or not. If one member of the board prefers to defer, then traditionally, we have just deferred, and I'm okay with continuing that process as well. So we'll go through, and if one member of the board wants to defer, we will respect that member's desire and defer. But other than that, if there are motions to make recommendations, then we can vote. Were there?
Can I ask a question before we start? When do we need to have the votes for recommendation to be printed in the warrant?
Well, the schedule was that it would be voted tonight, and then I'd be sending this to the printer on the 17th. I think I can buy a few more days, but this, October 22 would be the true, the true drop dead. I, I just don't know how to get it printed if we push it past that. The finance committee will not make their votes until the 24th, and I, I mean, I'll try, but I do not think I'm gonna be able to get their reports into the booklet.
Because I, I watched last week's FinCom, so I heard the questions and some of the discussion, but I'm only now actually laying eyes on, on it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part. What'd you say?
It's only now that I'm actually seeing it in print.
We can, we can walk through it tonight and then, you know, discuss concerns, but I will have to walk out of that meeting next Tuesday night with a final copy and signatures the next day.
Because, yeah. The initial draft that we were sent, I thought last, was it last week?
Yep.
Or a couple of weeks ago?
Or two weeks ago.
Said to, don't, no, it was last week. Don't look at it because it's, it's changed since October 3rd, and we were gonna get an updated version, right?
Then, then I fell down somewhere.
Yeah, because I didn't.
Don't recall saying, don't look at it.
But relatively speaking, I mean, it's not hugely different. There's an, an omission. I mean, I think we received about two weeks ago, because I remember we had this conversation last week, and it was a week before that.
I got a draft on October 3rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as I said at last week's meeting, I never got that one at all. So this is the first time I'm seeing this. And, you know, for whatever reason, but, you know, it, I have to say, on the outset, that it's a little distressing, and again, I, you know, again, we have an interim town manager, and we have people going through this process the first time, et cetera. I understand all that. But to take, I mean, it, it has been past practice that one of the, one of the things to do with the articles, even as they're being submitted before the warrants even closed, is to alert the townspeople what is going to happen, right? What do they should be prepared for? And there are some major things being asked in this, in this warrant that we haven't even discussed here, and now tonight, we're gonna be asked to take a position on them. We haven't even discussed them. Now, some of them are housekeeping. The Article 1 is housekeeping, I get it. But some of them are not just housekeeping. Some of them are fairly substantial, two of them majorly substantial, that as a select board member who thinks I'm pretty plugged in to town politics and what goes on, have not heard these things.
I, I wanna add to what Mr. Lonzo's saying. I concur. I know that, you know, the chair and I had a conversation before the meeting started, that I know that this process with having, you know, an interim town manager, that, you know, the usual process that we undergo, and I know that I did miss a meeting, and I inquired if it occurred at the meeting I missed. But the usual process is, as Mr. Lonzo stated, and, and we can do this as we go into the spring, is that as we get warrants submitted, that usually the board is made aware of them during submission, and most definitely, once the warrant closes, we get a review. Typically, the board then identifies anything that they want to be presented to us, and then we separately kind of manage the calendar. That's not on the primary calendar of when warrants go through, but we add in there the date for when we are, our recommendations need to occur by at, and then prior to that, we then kind of walk through it. So I do think that because of the time that we're under, that some things here are gonna be pretty straightforward to approve. They're pretty standard, paying, you know, outstanding invoices, things like that. But there are some more substantial things, and I think it may be in our better interest to proceed with a supplement similar to what the finance committee is planning to do that identifies what our recommendations are and are not at a later point. Again, you know, we can, we know why we're in the situation we're in. It is what it is. But I do think it's rela, it's important for that we take the time to look at all this, and that over the course of the next several meetings, that we, we, we discuss them in depth, and, and if necessary, receive presentations.
Yep, I agree, and some of those presentations are definitely gonna happen. So, all right, let's just jump in. So the first article, hold on one second, I wanna share my screen so people at home can see.
What is our deadline for when we, Mr. Chair, if I may ask, what is the deadline or the town manager for when we need to have our recommendations in for this to go out?
I think, go ahead, interim town manager, I won't speak for you, but I think you just mentioned that.
If your, if your review is to result in rewording or revoking any of the proposed articles, I absolutely need to know that by next Tuesday. To send out an article that you think needs substantial rewrites, or you didn't really want that there, I, I really have to have that by next Tuesday.
Tuesday as in our meeting, or before?
Tuesday as in your meeting. I gotta walk out of there Tuesday night with a warrant that is done.
Got it.
With respect to your recommendations, for those such as Article 1, Article 2, there's some others, perhaps you're prepared to vote on them. If we can get them in the booklet, great. If we can't, we'll publish them as a standalone, as we will have to do with the finance committee.
All right. Any remaining questions or comments before we go in? All right, so Article 1, authorization to pay late bills and funding thereof. To see if the town will vote to, A, authorize the payment of a so-called late bill from fiscal year '24, B, appropriate the sum of $4,180.00 to pay said late bill, and C, meet said appropriation by a transfer from the overlay surplus account, or take any other action relative thereto. Any discussion, or is there a motion or a deferral on this one?
I'd like to know, what, what is the payment for?
Yeah, that's one of the questions that the finance committee had.
Oh, okay, so we don't know right now.
I didn't ask what it was for, no. I can have that answer for you next Tuesday night.
It won't change my opinion of whether or not we should pay our bills, but it is good to know, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think we need to pay it regardless, but I also would like to know. I'm comfortable.
Right. Is there a motion or a deferral?
I would, I would prefer, frankly, that I get the answers to your questions before you vote on matters. I, I think that's, I would feel more comfortable.
Okay.
With that.
Mr. Chair, if I may suggest, we, when we display on the screen, sometimes it's helpful to make it like super large.
Yep, I did that last time. You're absolutely right. I will zoom in. Thank you. So it sounds like we want to defer on this one?
When you're saying defer, you mean just till next, the next meeting? Or you mean we're not gonna vote until town meeting?
Um, we normally still vote on them before town meeting, even if we've had to set up meetings right before town meeting, so that we have an actual recommendation to make. But sometimes it'll get into the warrant, sometimes it won't.
I just wanted to confirm what deferring tonight means. I mean, we could likely approve this next week if we know what it's for.
Yeah.
Right? So just deferring to next week?
Okay.
I was, I was just asking.
Uh, it sounds like what you're saying is kind of that fourth status of next week.
Yeah.
So defers, yeah. Maybe tonight, we can't defer. Maybe we make those deferment decisions next week.
Okay.
Hold. Call it a hold until next week?
Yeah, hold.
Sure. All right. Passover for now. All right, so we'll move down to Article 2, amending school fiscal year '25 budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $31,882 for the fiscal year '25 operating budget for the school department to total in the aggregate the sum of $24,881,926, or take any other action relative thereto. So this was in the, from the increase of Chapter 70 funding that we got that memo from.
So my question on this is the wording, because if, if the money that we're looking to appropriate is coming from the state, then we don't need to raise it.
You, you do, because it goes onto the tax recap. It's different than transferring from cash that's somewhere in one of your other accounts.
I was under the impression that raise meant through levy, tax levies.
It, it does, and then this will be an offset income, just like all your other state is an offset income.
And town council has reviewed all of this?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we should hold. I think I need a little more information about what this is for, just in clarity. I think I heard what you just said, that there is additional funding coming in from the state, but I don't understand, I'm with Mr. Lon, I don't understand why we're raising and appropriating.
Okay, I, I wanna be clear. This is here at the board's request. I will get you a better answer to your question on how this works with respect to trans, uh, taxation as opposed to transferring.
Got it.
From other funds.
All right, so it sounds like we want to skip this one for tonight. All right, we'll move on to Article 3 then. Article 3, Lunenburg Mart Connect Transportation Program. To see if the town will appropriate the sum of $20,000.00 to support the Lunenburg Mart Connect Transportation Program as provided on our behalf by the Monticewusset Area Regional Transportation Organization and administered by the Council on Aging, and to meet said appropriation by a transfer of said sum from overlay surplus, or take any other action relative thereto. Is there any discussion on this one, or is there a motion or a deferral?
So what, just to, what are they, let me read the summary. We're just increasing the, extending the service?
Uh, so it's not extending it, it's just changing the way that it's funded, if I understand correctly?
They're extending.
So we're just, we're just supplanting a grant?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, I have no issue.
All right, is there a motion to recommend approval?
I move to recommend approval of Article 3.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article 4, adoption of prudent investor rule. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 54, B, C, and D, to allow the town's trust funds to be invested in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 203(c), which is the so-called prudent investment rule, or take any other action relative thereto. All right. Any questions on this one?
No question, but a comment, that the library trustees did something similar, and that enabled them to realize improved returns, and so, you know, I, I do support this request coming from the cemetery. My only, um.
This, this is not coming from the cemetery. It's coming from the finance director.
Okay. I thought this was related to the cemetery. No, it's everything.
No.
We, we use the cemetery, sale of cemetery lots is an example of the trust fund, so you have the scholarship funds, conservation land purchased. We were trying to give people a sense of which type of monies would be subject to this prudent investor rule.
I think I would need to see more information.
What information specifically would you like to see?
Yeah, other communities that have done this, comparison data, what has, what have the results been? Because, I mean, essentially, it's asking the town to assume a little bit more risk.
Yep, yep.
And so, kind of justifying why we should assume that risk, and what the history is of other communities that have assumed that risk.
All right, I understand.
So in, in, again, in past practice, when, if something came up like this of a financial nature, the first question that would normally be asked is, okay, well, how much more money can we do by doing this? What is the added risk? And, you know, so we'd have some data to go on. Right now, there is like no data except a percentage difference, but as Mr. Jeffrey said, with increase in percentage returns comes an increase of risk. What is that increase in risk? Like what could happen?
All right, so do we want to defer on this one?
I think we're holding.
Hold it.
Till next week.
Yeah, all right, so we're gonna hold until next week. Article 5, adopting certain clauses relative to tax exemptions. I'm not gonna read through all this, but to see if the town will vote to accept or confirm its acceptance of it there, hold on, is that a type? To see if the town will vote to accept or confirm its acceptance of, if there is shown to be prior acceptance, Clause 17e, Clause 17f, and Clause 41d of Section 5 of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, or take any other action relative thereto.
I'm familiar with these, so I'm no problem with these changes in the limits being proposed.
I likewise don't have a problem, but I think that, you know, to the average person getting a booklet that says, you know, Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 17d, 41c, and then this table below, 17d, assets exemptions, 41c, I, I don't know if this is enough information for the public to make an informed decision. So I, I don't know if the wording of this, and we don't have influence over that so, so much, but I don't, I don't know if the wording of this in terms of what is it that the taxpayer gets out of this? What is the benefit to the taxpayer? I think that may need to be a little clearer.
Yep, I understand.
Also, after the, just for clarity of the sentence, there should be a comma between of and if. So it should read, to see if the town will vote to accept or confirm its acceptance of, if there is shown to be prior acceptance, Clause 17e, seven, 17th e? I think it's, should be 17.
Yeah, I wasn't sure why it was 17th and 41st.
Yeah, because it doesn't say 41st.
Right. Yes, it's Clause 41.
Seven, yeah, the TH should be 17e, Clause 17f. And I think there were some things from town council about what sections, were these already changed? Okay.
I think it's important to understand that this legitimizes what you've been illegally doing for nigh on to 20 years, stripping away everything else. You have been engaged in this practice for a number of years, and this would correct that oversight.
And adopt new sections.
Which give you the authority to do what you've been doing for nigh on to 20 years.
Right. No, I, I support the request fully. I just don't think the way that it's presented is clear.
I had written a summary. The assessors believed there was a better way to present it, and I went with their language, out of respect to their office.
All right.
We can have the assessors here next week if you would like. We can have any of these department heads here next week if you would like.
Well, they will be able to speak to this at special town meeting, right? They can, someone from the Board of Assessors? When this article actually comes up at special town meeting?
Yeah, of course they will.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we should get people as prepared as possible.
Yeah.
So.
That is the intent of the summaries.
Right.
It's not working out quite as well as I had hoped it would, but that is the intent, we're trying to prepare these summaries for each warrant article.
Yeah, no, I mean, like, even if we, what I would encourage is, you know, when we think of like the last sentence even in this summary, and I'm just gonna read it, each of, each of those clauses has defined baseline provisions for income and/or assets and/or exemption amounts that were put in place at the time the legislature adopted them. Towns can vote to modify limits and amounts. Towns can vote to modify limits and amounts. I don't know if that is clear enough to the average person reading it. I, I don't know. I, I know what they're saying, but I don't know if, if I didn't know what they were talking about, if that would make much sense to me.
I will share your concern with the Office of the Assessors. I took their language out of respect to their office.
All right.
And as, as a separate issue, I think what we're, I mean, what we're taking votes on, I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree or disagree about the clarity of it, because I'm too close to it, so I know what it says, but we're talking about whether we support or don't support the article. If everybody supports the article, I would make a motion that we recommend approval of Article V, and currently, we can get potentially clarifying summaries for next week, but at least we'll, it'll be in there what we vote on.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to move on to six now. Water Protection District. To see if the town will vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg to delete Section 250-4.9, Water Supply Protection District in its entirety and inserting a new section, Section 250-4.9, Water Supply Protection District, as written below. Zoning map is the last page in the voter's guide booklet. So I'm not going to read through all of this, but I know this has been on our radar for a long time. So, any discussion?
Are there any changes to this from the last time it was presented?
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah.
So the planning board has continuously been working with residents to get to a point where everyone was happy with it moving forward. And that is the version of this that's here now.
This is the third time something of this nature has come before us.
Yeah, so, yeah, special town meeting, then last, yep, it is.
And then annual, and now this time.
Yep.
I mean, I haven't read all 10 pages of what the changes are, but I'd like to hear them. I mean, personally, I want to, I was for them in the past when I've heard them, but I'd like to know what the changes are. I have not reevaluated that, so I couldn't take a position, I don't even know by next week I could take a position on this, because I'd want to hear what people's argument against is. I've always been for it, I think we need it, it, it updates a policy that's, you know, 20 years old, I think, more than that, but I want to hear what anybody's objection would be this time again.
I would like to defer to, on this one.
All right, sure, so we'll move on.
Would you actually have someone from the planning board here? How can I get you the information that you'd...
I believe, was the chair of the planning board in contact with you, Mr. Chair? Because he indicated to me at a meeting that he and I are members of, on the capital planning, that he wanted to know if he'd be able to come before the board and...
No, but I can reach out and get that scheduled as soon as possible. All right, moving on to Article VII. Once I scroll through all of it. All right, Council on Aging, Revolving Fund Meals Program. To see if the town will vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Section 138-5d, entitled "Authorized Revolving Funds by the Creation of an Additional Revolving Fund to be Named Council on Aging Mealsite Revolving Fund and Administered as Presented Below." So I'm not going to read through the table here, but, and two, set the fiscal year '25 spending limit at $16,000 and no cents, or take any other action relative thereto. Any discussion?
I have a question over, over the, you know, I haven't followed Council of Aging The question through you, Mr. Chair, is for Carter. You know, I'm familiar with us setting up revolving funds, but what is the, what is the core benefit here in this situation of doing that for?
To bring your current practice in line with statute and best practice.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion or deferral?
I would move that we recommend approval of Article VII.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right, Article VIII, Parks Department Revolving Fund. To see if the town will vote as a block to, one, amend Code of Lunenburg, Section 138-5d, entitled "Authorized Revolving Funds by the Creation of an Additional Revolving Fund to be Named Parks Programming Revolving Fund and Administered as Presented Below." All right, so I'm not going to read through that. Two, set the fiscal year '25 spending limit at $77,000 and no cents. Transfer all funds remaining, the, so there's a typo, transfer, transfer all funds remaining in the Parks Revolving Fund established under MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53d, by Article VII of the Special Town Meeting of February 6, 1984, as amended by Article 11 of the Special Town Meeting of October 14, 1986, on the effective date of this amendment by law. And, four, revoke the town's prior acceptance of MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53d, and dissolve the aforementioned 53d revolving fund upon the transfer of all funds, or take any other action relative thereto.
Same question to the interim town manager.
A 53d account, the interest that is earned can stay in the account. Has limitations on what you can use it for, for staff, but the larger issue is, at the end of every fiscal year, any amount in excess of $10,000 is supposed to be swept into the general fund. That has not happened for a number of years. I'm told that it has built up to a balance of $75,000 plus or minus. Now, there is a risk here, because this has to go to the Attorney General's office, and you can only create a new revolving fund in the middle of a fiscal year if you can identify the funding source. We've advised the Parks Chair that a careful reading at the AG's office may cause a referral to the Department of Revenue, who may say, well, it's, it's nice that you're finally straightening this out, but you kept those extra funds in these years, and they should be turned back to the general fund. So there's a risk, but the Parks Chair, and I believe the commission as a whole, and certainly the finance director and myself, believe that no matter how that risk plays out, you do need to bring these monies into accord with statute.
So in the worst case, it would go to the general fund?
That's the worst case.
So, at which case, if we make the case at town meeting to reappropriate it back into that fund, we could do it?
You cannot.
Okay, you can't?
No.
Okay.
Because there's very special provisions as to what to go into it.
Okay.
Now, what I didn't think of in time as I was writing this, was you could do a special appropriation, just like capital article, that doesn't expire, and they would work that off until they built a revolving fund back up. And we could, we could certainly do that if, if you wanted to take that route instead.
Well, I just don't want to penalize the Parks Department and their funds, that's all.
I, I understand. The problem is, we wouldn't know exactly what to appropriate, because you got to get through town meeting, it's got to go through the AG, and only then will they stop spending out of the 53d account, transfer the money to the 53e and a half, and only at that point do we know exactly what kind of money we're talking about.
Got you.
So we could take whatever approach you'd like, but there is that alternative approach.
Do you have a recommendation on which approach you would take?
I, I think you just run the risk and you do it, and we figure it out somehow. But whatever you decide to do, my recommendation is you fix this. It's gone on, like, the, the Board of Assessors, it's gone on too long.
Right.
All right, so is there a motion, or do we want to pass over this tonight?
One, one question. Do we have to call out specifically 53e and a half and point one? Do we have to call out the type of revolving fund? Because I see it in the title of the article, but I don't see 53e and a half mentioned.
Yeah, it's, it's in the summary.
But does it have to be in the article?
It should be in, it will add it to the summary, but 53e and a half authorizes you to establish these funds in accordance with your bylaw, so you don't actually call it out in your bylaws.
All right, is there a motion, or do we want to pass on this?
Do you want to use an appropriation method to resolve it in case something goes wrong?
I think that sounds reasonable.
Yep. Let me, let me try and work out that, what that number might be between now and next Tuesday.
All right. So, hold.
All right? We're going to hold on this one.
There is a challenge. We don't have any certified free cash right now. That is the challenge to the alternative solution.
Do you want to expand upon that? Our date's usually somewhere in October, November 1-ish.
You're not going to hit that this year. I'd be happy to speak offline to any of the board members as to what the issue is.
Okay.
All right.
And, do we have, talking about fiscal things, are we going to get a tax rate? Is that all set before town meeting? Before special town meeting?
We are trying to have the classification hearing on November 5. We do not yet have our LA 3 values. We, we have not yet submitted all of the property data to have our property values certified by the state, and until such time as that happens, we, we can't set a tax rate. So, we may not be able to have that rate going into this special town meeting.
Which is wildly risky.
Does that mean we're at risk of not having an actual Q3 tax bill?
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, that's got to be by the end of the year.
I know.
Yeah.
But, we're not going to have it by special town meeting? We're not going to know our tax rate by November 12?
It doesn't officially have to be, you know, everything doesn't have to be set until the end of December, but I think our history has been usually the meeting before town meeting or the meeting after is usually when we set, so, this Selectman Long's request is right on target, but if it's a week or two later, it's probably not advantageous, because I don't think we're going to have all the information going into special town meeting this year.
I feel like we're getting dangerously close to, that, that, all the timelines are slipping, and we're getting close to last year's timeline.
Well, I'm not worried about that. I mean, that, that is a concern. That wasn't, by the way, that wasn't last year, that was two years ago, but, oh, no, last year we didn't get it either. Yeah, last year we didn't get it either, but that we, but that we knew well in advance. My concern is that without the tax rate and, and without certified new growth, have we certified new growth either? Yeah? See, without any of this, we're appropriating, and we don't even know what our levy limit is, so we could actually use revenue to run the town when we're looking at, you know, when we just passed an override, we're looking at other people who want to spend, in upcoming articles, $5.2 million to borrow, and we're not even going to know what we're appropriating. We could leave money on the table, which happened one year, which is, in my mind, really bad.
I'm reluctant to get into, I, I do not want, appear to be throwing anyone under the bus.
Fair enough.
You had, and we notified you of this, I believe, in one of our weekly reports, that we had a major department that had a considerable amount of work to balance out its year-end budget. That has only happened as a result of considerable work by the finance director with the folks in that department, and frankly, he went above and on, beyond, in my view, in showing them exactly where and how to move money. That's, that, that's not his job, and frankly, we shouldn't be doing it for other departments in, with respect to the specific department in question. We have a challenge in the assessor's office in some action that they need to take tomorrow night, and we've not been able to submit our values to the Department of Revenue. And irrespective of everything else, you can't set a tax rate without your values having been certified.
Right, no, I understand, that, I understand the mechanics. I'm just saying, we have always, in fact, when, what I described earlier, you know, happened, when we lost revenue, we lost revenue because we, we had a special town meeting that appropriated money, and then we had the tax rate set later, we, we've always tried to set the special town meeting in the fall at a time such that we can have the tax rate set, so we know exactly what kind of monies we're talking about, that we have to appropriate. And without knowing that, it's a risky thing. I, I'm not here to assess blame, I'm not looking to assess blame, but, I mean, I, I can't, in my position here as somebody who represents the town, I can't not acknowledge the risk, you know, whatever the reasons.
We're not appropriating any new money, or raising any new money that we don't have a funding source for.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll continue to push for November 5, but it might be November 19 before we can have the classification hearing.
Okay.
All right, so what do we want to do for this one, Article?
Four and eight?
Yep.
Well, the second method that you mentioned needs free cash, so if we don't have free cash, then we can't use your second method.
Hopefully, tomorrow night, the assessors will take their action, and I'll report to you next Tuesday.
All right, so I would delay this till next Tuesday. I would recommend, Mr. Chair.
All right, moving on to Article 9. Request a Select Board, RE, The Brooks House. To see if the town will vote to request a Select Board to prepare a report and present the same to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting, two, that would...
That would?
That would have the intent of a sale or long-term lease of The Brooks House, situated on 1033 Massachusetts Avenue, by one. Defining a lot of minimally compliant size for the property, that includes at least four parking spaces as part of the property. Two, conveying to the buyer or lessee and their successors and assigns a non-exclusive perpetual easement for the purpose of using up to eight additional parking spaces nearest to the property to accommodate customers of any business located therein from the lot of the town-owned library on 1023 Mass Ave. Three, conveying to the buyers or lesssees and their successors and assigns a non-exclusive perpetual easement for the purpose of using the existing driveway and parking lot of the town-owned library on 1023 Mass Ave for the purpose of vehicular and pedestrian access to the property. Four, consulting with the school committee and relevant parties on the recommendation to be contained in the report. Five, advising on the terms and conditions the Select Board deems reasonable and necessary to protect the interests of the town. And six, advising on the methods and costs of placing the property for sale or lease by appropriate legal means at the town's disposal, with the intent of offering the property for sale or long-term lease by October 30, 2025, and continually retendering the offer until the property is sold or leased, or take any other action relative thereto.
This one was presented to us by the AP.
It was, but it was modified after that.
Yeah, because they wanted it to be an article two. Now it's just a request, so, that's a whole lot different. I mean, I'm for this, again, I, we have to do something to do, we have to take some action with that building, and if this is, you know, we can do that, there's a lot of work with the re, re, setting up the property lines, I think upon looking at this property, it's still under the school, and that would mean, you know, we'd have to put in some, potentially, you have to put in some money on surveying, but how you would even do this.
So, the discussion, the presentation on this, if I remember right, because that was the meeting I missed, you thought this study could be done in-house?
This, this, this first cut, we thought, I think...
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't require any additional funds?
Not at this point.
To generate this report that's described here?
But the report would then describe, you know, so, here, here's a conceptual plan, they can do it in PowerPoint and the graphics that they have. If that's agreeable to the town, the report would outline how much is needed for a survey, how much is needed for title work, how much is needed for an appraisal when you go to offer. So the report would outline the funds that were needed to move forward, and I believe that can be done in-house by the staff that you have.
I support the request. I think that the, I, I think the language in two about perpetual easement for the purpose of using up to eight additional parking spaces nearest to the property, I think that's a bit excessive. You know, I think when we look at the properties even across the street, most people are not going to get, you know, four cars in their driveway plus eight cars parked nearby. I don't think it's possible...
I don't think it's possible for anyone along Mass Ave, from the center of town, even past the high school, to accommodate eight cars per house. But I do think that what is being asked is reasonable. We've asked the APDC to come before them, and it's been a design committee with this request. We already have the ability to sell the building itself, they're just asking to sell the building and the land. And I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Lockwood about a lot of my concerns, primarily that, you know, this would become like a billboard property that requires us to have good relations with whoever lives there, or it could be really problematic for the town. And I think that those can be mitigated, so I generally support the request.
All right. Is there a motion, or do we want to pass on this for now?
I would move that we recommend approval of Article nine.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article 10, Salary Administration Plan Amendments. To see if the town will vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg Chapter 70 Salary Administration Plan and add a Chapter 71 to be entitled Employment Contracts by making certain deletions and strike-through in additions in bold italic as follows. So I'm not going to read through it, but I will ask Carter to summarize the changes.
So I'm going to ask you to hold this tonight so that I can get comments, concerns. But I would like to touch upon, these are all driven by recruitment and retention issues. And we did circulate to you, we did have a chance to write the full memo at length because you saw what Julie's been working on, but we did give you a overview of the employee listening sessions. The employee listening sessions specifically spoke to a desire for the, of the part-time employees, under 20 hours a week, for holiday, vacation, and sick. If, and that does take time off the clock. There's a, there's a cost to that. There's not an out-of-pocket cost, but there is a productivity cost, if you will. Certainly, if you wanted to think about that in terms of capping it at some level that seems reasonable, yet gives the employees that benefit, that's something we could certainly talk about. The next thing that, and I think one of the members of the board may have been present when it was spoken of, was a sick leave bank. This has been handled, as I understand it, in a one-off situation. A employee in a department gets sick, and if that gets approved, and I don't know exactly how that happened, then some employees can contribute towards that employee. This would be a town-wide sick leave bank for everyone. Now, there's union issues, but those are easily dealt with, and we would have to have an executive session to talk about how I propose to deal with that. What this does is not get into all the weeds about exactly how it would work, but it authorizes the Select Board over the coming, it would be seven months, to develop that plan. And were there to be a personnel committee in place once again, it does call for you to consult with the Personnel Committee. The third piece came out of the listening sessions also, and that was a recognition program, that we should be doing something to recognize those employees who really go above and beyond. And so frankly, this was probably the easiest thing for me, because I simply stole it out of where I've introduced it elsewhere. It has been reviewed with the department heads, they thought it was a good approach. It's a nominal amount of money, 250 bucks per employee. So those were all driven by what I'm going to call the retention side of things. Some of the other changes that are proposed are a little bit more flexibility in establishing the starting wage. Right now, your bylaw requires, if we're going to try to start someone above step one, we have to get the approval of the Personnel Committee, which means it has to be posted. Then there has to be that 48 or 72, whatever it takes to get that quorum. Meanwhile, the clock is running on trying to have a conversation with the employee. So this does put a little more authority in the town manager's hands, but out of respect to the Personnel Committee, the town manager still has to consult with the chairman. The chairman can then report to the balance of the committee, and if they think the wheels are coming off the bus, they can come back to you, they can raise the issue. But we need to find a way to close some of the gap on how much time it takes to hire people, at least in this environment. And finally, in addition to the small recruitment bonus, not bonus, but incentive, which is clawed back, so it's not all that great of an incentive, you know, we have some people who come to us recently, one person with 25 years' experience, in exactly the same job in municipalities. And to have to tell them that they're going to start at two weeks all over again, it doesn't fly. Now, that can work in reverse. I had a health agent who went to another town, he loved the other town, he loved the pay, but then they told him he was going to have to start over at two weeks, and he came into me and said, no, 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 I'm not doing that. I got to keep my guy in that situation. So please look these over. They have been discussed quite a bit with staff, they were distributed to over 80, I'm going to say 80-plus or minus, because I don't want to be off on the map. I understand some of your concerns about the Personnel Committee. We've tried to respect that they would still be existing and be part of the process, but give me a call over the next few days, one-on-one, send me your thoughts, we'll try to rewrite in a manner that you can find acceptable.
Okay. So I will say that there is nothing in here, again, I just read it, so it's seven pages. So on its face, there's nothing in here that I'm necessarily against, except the fact that there's just, to me, there's not enough runway. First of all, it hasn't been gone through a Personnel Committee, because we don't have a Personnel Committee. This has to be, I mean, I'd like to know the ramifications of each of these changes, about how it'll work, I need other people to look at how it'll work, and for it to be, sure, we talked about it in overview, you know, what happens up here, to get it down on paper, and then say, in four weeks from now, we're going to be voting on this, to me, it doesn't give anywhere near ample time to discuss it. And so on that criteria alone, I would recommend, or it would be my feeling, that we, this should wait till the Annual Town Meeting, so people can review this. Again, the things you mentioned, I'm not necessarily against or for, they seem perfectly reasonable, but to make this kind of changes with almost no visibility to the public or a nonexistent Personnel Committee, I just, I just couldn't support.
Even the special merit awards?
Sure.
That seems like...
Sure. We could do, I mean, really, is this, sure. I mean, if you had, if you pared it down to the special merit awards, sure, I could probably get behind it.
All right.
Might I ask Mr. Alonso if he could be supportive of the sick leave bank also?
Well, again, I just need to know how the whole thing works. Again, I'm not, again, I was for it when, when it was brought up, I was actually kind of appalled that we haven't, that it hasn't been in place and hasn't done it. I just, again, I just think that from listening sessions to putting something on paper and discussing it, I think it's just happening way faster, and I'm not trying to delay it for the sake of delaying it, but these things need public hearings, they need time for people to digest, time for me to digest, you know, I'll even put myself in there, I mean...
Can we at least pass on it for now, and then keep discussing it, and if there are specific issues, then we'll address that at that point?
What do you mean, pass till next week? Hold?
Can I just add something, please?
Yes.
I don't disagree with Mr. Alonso. This got pushed faster than I would have liked, primarily because I wanted to show, right or wrong, that we were listening to the employees and what they had to say in all those sessions. So I felt a sense of responsibility to take what I learned in those sessions and to try to translate them into action. Absent that, I would agree with you 100%.
So I commend the, I, what you just expressed, I completely commend. And I want the employees to know that we are doing it, and I, I do. And I think that by saying that, listen, these are, these are a draft, we don't necessarily vote on it, but we can submit it as a separate piece, as an addendum, so take it out of the warrant, show it as a piece and say, this is what we're looking at, and these are the things we're working on, so people know we're actively working on it. But we need time to basically form it and dot all the i's and cross all the t's for the, for the annual, and make a promise that we'll have something for the annual. I think, I think it touches all the buttons that we need to, to say that we're serious about it.
I, I support, I don't disagree with Mr. Alonso. I, I think that what we heard in the listening sessions were things that I've been hearing offline for years. They just weren't making their way to us. And I think that the attempted climate survey a couple of years ago was a good avenue, in which a lot of people, you know, have said that they vocalized these concerns in paper, but again, we never got a good report out of that. So I, I think that we should take a look at this next week, but generally, I think that when we have staff come before us and vocalize a concern that we've solicited, that some things are straightforward, common sense solutions, such as the sick bank, such as merit opportunities, you know, I, I think that I'm comfortable as a member voting on the request. I do agree that the runway here has been short. I think we have a duty over the next month to, if the board in full recommends it, I think we have a duty to socialize what's being put in here, but I think that, you know, we want our staff to work well for us. I think that we need to be, it would be helpful if we can hear them and implement changes more immediately, that they've been, I think, sitting on for years.
All right. So do we want to hold off on this for next week?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if I could take this opportunity to say, if you are out there and you are interested in helping and reviewing this, you know, the Personnel and the Salary Admin Plan, and would like to be part of the Personnel Committee, we need people like you to help, you know, staff up that committee and do this kind of work, where we're reviewing the fairness of the Salary Admin Plan employees, and making sure that they are not forgotten in this whole thing, and that these, these issues are addressed. Thank you.
Of course. All right. Article 11, this one should be straightforward. Presentation by Town Bodies. To see if the town will allow the Chair of the Budget Task Force and the Chair of the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee to make a verbal report on the status of the work of their respective group.
Right.
Or take any other action relative thereto.
I move that we recommend approval.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Article 12, Debt Authorization for Marshall Park Improvements. To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money to pay all remaining costs of the design and construction of the Marshall Park renovation project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, to determine whether this appropriation shall be raised by borrowing or otherwise, to approve the submission of the grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program, in furtherance of this project, to reaffirm that the Marshall Park land is dedicated to park purposes under Chapter 45, Section 3, or take any other action relative thereto.
I think we should hold 12.
So from the summary, my understanding is that the Parks Department, and then the next Article 2 by citizen petition, is looking for the town to borrow approximately...
$2 million.
$5.2 million that they are hearing about tonight to vote on in a month that even sideswiped me. Is that, first of all, is that the ask? They're asking for $5.2 million to borrow?
I truly don't understand how you are just seeing this tonight, though, because that number has been set for a while.
No, no, no. The number to complete the project is 5.2. The fact that they're going to ask for it is the first time I'm being told that this was going to be asked for as an article. It has always been left, first of all, let's review the history, is that they changed the, when they came to us and we gave them the $1 million, the whole park was going to cost their estimate approximately 5-point-something million dollars. So we appropriated through ARPA, $1 million, they got grants, and then, when all was said and done, and they, you know, like, $3 million was raised or found from grants and everything, we found out that they still needed $5.2 million. And I found out that because I read it in the paper of a, a, a project manager being sought for a project that was $8.5 million. So they were never came to this board and made this public, maybe they made it public in their things, I don't watch every board meeting.
Yeah.
I don't have time, nobody has time. Okay? So I know that there was 5.2 remaining to fulfill what the project was, but nobody had any, I, I didn't have any idea where they were going to appropriate that from.
Okay.
But now here I am today, one month before the special town meeting, that they're going to ask to borrow $5.2 million for a park, when we just had an override of just shy of a million dollars. We have a task force who indicates that there may be more financial, you know, tightness ahead, we have buildings from the municipal building that's going to require money, and again, no runway to get people set for this. To me, I, this is a dead no for me.
Yep. All right. Anything anyone else wants to say on that?
Right. I think, Tom, that, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think that I am trying to get to a yes, and I want to be very transparent about this. I am actively trying to get to a yes on this request. I want to support this request. If we had to vote today or next week, I'm a no. I think that if I had a little bit more time to better understand the financial implications, which I want to comment, would ordinarily be flushed out well by now. I think that the process we undergo in the fall and in the spring is a healthy process, so that way, by the time we have a budget that we present to the town and all the capital requests that go with it, that we've all spent months flushing through all those details, asking all those questions. And so I think that I need to get a, I have very specific questions to the Chair of the Parks Commission as it relates to this request. I think that between now and the next month, it is possible, I want to acknowledge, it is very possible that I could, that I could get to a yes, but I think that everything Mr. Alonso just stated, you know, is a change in information. I think that if we would have been advised that this was a, you know, eight or nine million dollar project, I would not have committed a million dollars to it. You know, I probably would have, would have looked for the cost to come down first. I have questions about budgetary implications on other things, given that we don't know where we stand with free cash and, and new growth, I don't know where this money's coming from. I don't know when the debt that we currently have on the books actually falls off the books this year, so, you know, when can we actually absorb it? And then I think that, you know, there's been some intimation that some of these grants have time limits on them, and so I just, I would like some clarification on what those time limits are. Again, I've personally asked these questions to the Chair of the Parks Commission, and she committed to getting answers to me, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks, and a satisfactory answer to those questions could result in me supporting the request, but generally speaking, you know, for all the reasons Mr. Alonso stated, I think that that's my current position.
Yeah. So I want to say I fully support the project, but how we finance it really matters, and financing it with regular debt is very concerning to me. We did have 500,000 of our regular debt drop off from FY '24 to FY '25, and despite that, we still needed an override. So it is very concerning to me. So I'll just put that up there.
Yeah. I just, there's not enough information here to understand, I don't understand how we got here. I don't know how it went from a 5-point-something million to an 8-point-something million project. And I honestly, I don't know if there's enough time to flush it all out to actually present at special town meeting. I don't know if there's a time limit to this, to the, the grant that's mentioned here? Is there a deadline? Is there a deadline?
I was told that there is a deadline, and that's where I had a lot of questions because my understanding was that the award was received in September and that they have to have full town committed project funding by the end of December in order for the grant to stick. And, and I don't personally understand federal government giving grants that says, oh, and by the way, you've got three months to get your town to commit to all these funds for the, so I, I just have certain questions about how that is actually working. But that's my understanding, is that there's a deadline on the million dollar Land Water Conservation Fund Grant, and that it expires the end of December.
Well, I know that, I thought that, that LWCF grant was granted a while ago. So they didn't just, my understanding is they didn't just give us three months. I thought it was.
The state grant was.
Oh.
The federal grant was relatively recent.
Oh, okay.
So the PARC, P-A-R-C, I forget the exact what it stands for.
Right.
That's a federal grant.
Well, then I'm all confused because the, the email that I got to me earlier today was very specifically LWCF. And I'm, I thought I looked at a date of September of '24 on that letter.
Well, that's what I think, that's what I think you just confirmed, what you just said.
Yes. That grant, that grant was just recent, he said.
Okay. And that was the one I thought that I was told expires by the end of December.
Right.
But it's administered by the Commonwealth, but the source, and that was another thing. So with, with the LWCF grant, in the, in the literature that I read, it said that it comes from oil and gas funds. It's not actually taxpayer dollars. So I, I think that we need clarification on this. I don't want to bad mouth it. I just think that we need clarification on what the grants are, what the requirements are for those grants, when things need to be fully funded, and if there's, if this can be fully funded in the spring, then, you know, I think we should talk about it. But if, I, I just don't understand enough. I need more information.
Yeah.
Or rather clarity on the information.
On its face, I don't see how anybody is against rebuilding the park. I think there's no one in, very few people, I never should say no one. There's very few people who would be against rebuilding the park. It has been overgrown, it's been, however, what is the average tax bill going to change? How is it going to change?
That's just for regular debt.
What?
Not excluded debt.
Okay. But then, then how does this affect our financial policies?
Exactly.
What are our, how far did we go down? Because we were close to that, you know?
Yep.
There've been people talking about the upcoming or the impending in the next few years, you know, Turkey Hill, either renovations or rebuild or something of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
You know? So we need to keep our credit available.
Yeah.
And those are all questions that need to be answered. And it seems like we're doing this now to chase, you know, the million dollars. Now, again, I, I don't want to thumb my nose at a million dollars, but our override barely passed.
Yeah.
And that was to fund our own schools, and that was less than a million dollars. Now you're going to tell people the next year that you're going to just borrow money for five point two million dollars? When, if I may ask, I mean, feel free not to answer, but when did people on the, like I said, this totally came as a surprise to me today. So when did people on this board know about this, that they were going to ask a warrant article to borrow five point two million dollars?
When I went to Hannaford, I'll tell you, I went to Hannaford on a Saturday, I think it was.
So this Saturday?
I, I think it was two Saturdays ago. And there was a citizens' petition, and residents were asking for signatures for a citizens' petition, and I was very confused on what the request was.
Okay.
And I was like, what is this for? Oh, it's for a million dollar federal grant. Well, why do we need a citizens' petition for a million dollar federal grant? Oh, it's to get the funding for the project. How much is that? So I remember stopping and saying, what is, what are these details? I don't know if that was two weeks ago or three weeks ago, but I found out at Hannaford.
Okay. So within a couple of weeks?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
So I've known about this for maybe a little longer than just a couple of weeks, and I have put a lot of thought into it, and I've said a lot of what I think already. You know, there's a, there's a big difference with regular debt versus excludable debt, right? And I'm fully supportive of the project, but how you finance it is very important. And I have a lot of concerns about the impact that this will have on our operational budget, given that it's regular debt, which will, for people at home, excludable debt is basically like the override. Your taxes go up, and it adds to the amount of money that you take in to pay for something very in particular. Regular debt is built in to the operational budget. So we have a certain limit, right? Three or four percent of our operational budget's three percent. And I know that we're well under it, so yes, technically, we could do this. But if we do that, it's going to have an impact on the rest of the operational budget. And I'm concerned and want to know more about the impact that it'll have on other departments because, again, we had $500,000 come off our debt schedule last year to this year, and we still need an override. So that's where I'm at with this.
And when, when, and when did you both know about it?
Carter emailed the draft October 3rd, and it's in there.
Well, that's, was it the same email that the, the warrant?
The draft warrant, October 3rd.
Okay. Well, again, I, I've said publicly, I'd never got that for some.
I also will just add, we did have a meeting with the Chair of the Parks Commission, I want to say in, that was in June or July, and we had a full presentation on all of this minus the amount of money that they would be asking for.
I don't recall anything where they were going to ask for money. They gave us an update on the project.
Okay.
And the project manager. I knew how much was outstanding in the project.
Okay.
That is not the same as, and we're going to ask for it in the fall.
Yeah. And we never, we weren't told in that meeting that they're asking for it in the fall. I think Amanda's trying to rack her brain to think when she.
Yeah, I cannot remember, aside from seeing it in the draft warrant. Let me scroll back forward. I'm also not feeling the best right now, so my brain might not be firing on all cylinders.
No worries.
All right. It's also getting late.
All right. So we obviously need to continue discussing this. Do we want to pass on this for now?
I think this is.
Instead of not discuss it anymore.
I, I would like to hold till next week, but it's sounding like several of our members have already made their mind up about this regardless, so I don't know if I'm hearing that. I mean, I don't, I don't know where we're at, but I think I'm hearing at least two members say no, three potentially say no. So I don't know if we're ready to vote, but I, again, I would hold or defer, but.
Yeah, I would rather hold for now. I've made, you know, I.
Okay.
Where I'm at pretty clear, and I'd rather hold.
But I support the product in full, and again.
Yeah, I do, too.
Trying to get to a yes.
I, one other thing. So Selectman Alonso, you mentioned this, I didn't explicitly say it, but you're absolutely right in that we're doing this so that we don't lose the million dollar federal grant. I just want to point out, like, that one grant isn't the be all, end all of this project. It's not. So we could easily, you know, come and ask for ideally, I would think, excludable debt. I would obviously want to see the numbers for that. I much prefer that to regular debt because of what I already talked about with the operational budget. But, you know, I, I haven't looked at the numbers, but the one million dollar federal grant isn't the be all, end all of this project. I just want to put it that way.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
And is this all the money that's going to be needed? Like, is this it? If, if, if five point two is a product done, do we have any assurance that, that, that this is it? That this is their product total? Like, do we know that? Or are we, or is this a partial funding and potential for more funding down the line? So I think I would like to get clarification on that from the Parks Commission. And I could reach out to Anita and ask her.
I've been talking to her.
And bring her back to the board.
Ideally, we do want to have, I mean, my goal, I was never going to go into a special town meeting without having her come in. But I know a lot of this is still, they're discussing, if you watch the Parks Commission meetings, they're still discussing a lot of it. So I'll talk to her and see if we can at least.
Yeah.
Schedule something so that she can come in and we can really discuss this further.
Are they scheduled to present to FinCom? I know it was discussed.
Yes, on the 24th.
That is on the 24th?
Yeah, they're having a public hearing.
With Parks being there.
So they're going to be the Finance Committee?
Yes, the Finance Committee.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on this, or are we good to pass on it tonight? All right. And that just leaves the citizens' petition.
Um, no.
Um, well, look, hold, hold on, we'll, we'll step back for a second.
We're going to read it, probably.
I, I, I will read it, yeah, but no, I have others things to say. So, "To see if the town will vote to borrow a sum of money of $5,200,000 within the town's debt limits under GL Chapter 44, Section 10, for the purpose of funding all remaining costs of the design and construction of the Marshall Park renovation project, including all related equipment and costs, and to approve the submission of the grant application to the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Program, and to reaffirm the Marshall Park land is dedicated to park purposes under Chapter 45, Section 3, or take any other action relative thereto." So it's my understanding of why this is here is Article 12, the one preceding this. So since that is most likely, I would assume, being included in the warrant, even if we don't recommend to approve it, we still want it to go to special town meeting to be voted on, we don't actually need the citizens' petition.
Well, the citizens' petition is the one you can't, right.
I know.
That's the one you can't remove.
Right. So my point is that it will be passed over at special town meeting.
I think that citizens who want to petition the town for five point two million should come before the Finance Committee, should come before the Select Board, should come before, you know, all the normal boards and processes, Capital Planning Committee that we go through before we borrow money. I do not like the idea of a citizens' petition for five point two million dollars when the normal process hasn't been utilized. So I'm, I'm a solid, I'm ready to vote on this one, and I'm voting, I, I would support not recommending approval of this article, regardless as to whether or not it's passed over or not. I'm a no.
Well, to me, they're both the same article.
They are, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not voting on the other one.
I don't want to vote on this one, too.
Kind of indicated, but I'll leave the opening. I don't ever set my decision in stone until we take a vote, but you know my feeling on both of these.
Yeah. All right. So we're going to pass on this.
Was anyone in favor of this, of 13?
No, but I think Selectman Alonso's point, which I agree with, is that we should vote on 12 and 13 at the same time.
Right.
So since we passed over 12, we should pass over this one as well. All right. And that's it? It's all the warrant articles.
If I can, may I, Mr. Chair, may I?
You may.
Quickly comment. You know, I don't, I don't want to crap on the ideas of anyone out there in the public who's put in the time, energy, and effort to really get behind what is a really good idea and a really good project. You know, we can't let process be a barrier to, to progress. But, but I do believe that, that, you know, process overwhelmingly is intended to guide, you know, informed decision-making. And, you know, five point two million is, is too significant, in my view, of a number to not go through a normal budgeting process. And, and even if we do it in an expedited process, I think that the, the need needs to be quite compelling. So I, as an individual, see a distinction between Article 12. I could support Article 12 with more information. But again, for a citizens' petition for Article 13, I don't want to crap on the people who've spent the time, pulled this together, gathered the votes. But I just want to comment that I think that, you know, regardless of, you know, the differences of personalities on these, on different boards, that everyone still takes the same approach, which is to do the best job that they can do. And I think that anyone who comes before any of the boards in town has a fair opportunity of being heard and, and being supported. And I would like to see this project go through that process to build that support. And it has nothing, my comments tonight have nothing to do with whether or not I support the project, and has everything to do with whether or not I think a citizens' petition is a proper process by which the town should be committing to five point two million dollars of debt.
Yeah. I mean, I would assume that all of us up here are fully supportive of this project. You know, I think the majority of us so far have already said that. How you finance it is important. So I agree with you, but, I mean, in terms of a citizens' petition versus the preceding article, I mean, it's really the same ask, you know, so, but.
Well, I would say, Mr. Chair, that I think the question, just to reframe what, the way you put it, is like, it's not how you finance is important. The first real question, I, I might be supportive of the project, and I am, in, in its conception, and I would love to see it completed, but the question isn't necessarily, how do we finance it? The first question is, can we finance it, given everything else on the table? Now, anybody who's a homeowner knows all the projects that you'd love to do in your home, but you can't just go out and do them even though you, hey, I still got outstanding credit on my credit card, so I can still do it. You know? These are serious matters, and I'm, I guess I'm really struck by the fact that, that for the most part, nobody knew this more than, let's, I'll use the October 3rd date. So two weeks ago, for a five point two million dollar ask, usually, you know, months in advance, you can come up with financial plans, you can talk about the impact to the borrowing limit, you can talk to the, you know, again, what, how will that affect other departments and everything, but to seemingly, to me, short-circuit the whole thing and then, then do it in special town meeting where we have a, we even get a lower attendance than annual town meeting. It's really, it's really hard to see how I get to any yes on this, other than somebody gifting us five point two million dollars.
I hear you. I do. All right. Any other discussion on anything regarding the warrant at this point? All right. Awesome. Well, thank you, everyone. So with that, let's move on to committee reports.
Uh, school committee meets tomorrow night. Budget Task Force meets on Monday.
We just had the Finance Committee Appointing Committee met, and we appointed a member, so we're down to only two vacancies. The, the member was very well-qualified. I, I look forward to her joining the, the committee and really hitting the ground running. The Capital Planning Committee met last week and got our first presentation from the Police Department with soon-to-be, then Lieutenant Thibodeau, soon-to-be interim chief. We have meetings October 21st and 23rd, I believe, are our next meetings to get other presentations, and of course, the Finance Committee. The Town Manager Screening Committee will not meet until the beginning of November, when the applications will be, you know, tallied and reviewed with us with Community Paradigm, and we can schedule interviews in December, which are scheduled for December 11th and 12th, I believe. And lastly, the Finance Committee, as you, it was noted several times today, and by the interim Town Manager in our email, that they are having their special town meeting public hearing on October 24th.
I do not have any, the Economic Development Committee has not met, and the Master Plan Steering Committee does still not have a date for an October meeting.
All right. So I have, the Municipal Building Design Committee is meeting this coming Monday. We're going to be hearing presentations from Chris Roof on an update for TC Passios, and then also Representative from APDC has been asked to provide an update on their warrant request that's here. Upcoming, it's either the next Regional Economic Development Committee, or Collaborative Committee, rather, meets beginning of November, so we don't have a meeting for a while. Library Trustees meet this Thursday, and I will be in attendance. And then just for like the benefit of the board, I'll just mention it now, you know, Carter, that we do have through Mass Development a UPP program underutilized properties, and, you know, we have not seen applications come in from Lunenburg, and it would be helpful, especially when we think about 925 Mass Ave and some other properties, that if there are opportunities where we can receive grant funding, I just want to encourage the town to apply. And then, you know, through my job, I'm conflicted when it comes to dispatch, but I can share that we did enter into a, a long-term lease with the Dispatch Center for, I think, five more years. That keeps, and the Dispatch Center provides regional dispatch. We did keep their rent basically the same with CPI adjustments, so that then trickles down to member communities. I think that I put them roughly 40% below market, and so that, that benefit, again, trickles down to all the member communities as well.
All right. Thank you. I don't have a committee report tonight. As we move on to warrants, we have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $772,646.40. Someone stole my pen. Who was it?
I have one, but I'll hear you again.
I have one. Thank you.
I came with one, too. It's all right. It's all right. I pull box.
All right, I have to download any action items.
Thanks.
No action items? All right. Upcoming meetings, we'll say there's at least October 22nd, probably not October 29th. Public comment, are there any public comments from the interim town manager?
There are. The first night I appeared before you, I had a book. Mr. Alonso asked me if it was Mass General Laws, and I said it was The Bully Pulpit, The Story of Theodore Roosevelt, who was lambasted by conservatives for being too radical and pushing too hard, and vilified by liberals for not pushing hard enough. I'm also reminded of Sun Tzu's The Art of War, his primary maxim being, "Don't Lose." So I do want to ask everyone to please look at the SAP and give me your questions and thoughts on it. And understand that I do believe there are some things in there that are worthy on their own merits. And I have a feeling of some responsibility to the employees to push some of those forward. So I will be thinking over the next few days as to whether or not there's a manner to bifurcate some of what I would call, specifically, some of the things that I think stand on their own better, that don't have as many strike-throughs and bold, they're all just plain brand-new ideas, and perhaps withdrawing the balance. So please, please do understand if you see a slightly different presentation next week, specifically on the SAP. Otherwise, we'll try to get as many of the department heads in here to be able to answer your concerns, questions, in better detail. And I won't be here for your next warrant, but I will advise the staff that as each one comes in to ship it off to you piece by piece.
All right, thank you, Carter. Are there any public comments from the public? Mr. Bowen? Oh, hold on, I think I have to unmute you now. We changed our Zoom permissions recently.
I am unmuted.
Yep, we can hear you.
Very good. Sun Tzu, when to fight, when not to fight? Thank you, Mr. Town Manager Terenzini. That was an excellent position. That brings me to my inquiry here, is that we have a Cemetery Commission who hasn't met since July 25th. My understanding is, is that they're supposed to meet every 30 days. I mean, obviously, you know, there may be some issues and so forth. But from my understanding, there are a number of town matters, particularly an eminent domain issue, that has been ignored for two years by the Cemetery Commission. And for a Cemetery Commission to take four months off as a result of a person's personal issue, when that person being president, that would be Nancy Yasko, has nothing to do with the quorum of a board, which would mean that Dave Doran and Michael Clock can basically handle that board, and to allow a meeting to last, even though you had a quorum, because somebody is not in control, is abhorrent. On that note, that's just my inquiry to you to look into that, as to, there's a quorum board there, and there are town matters, particularly an eminent domain matter that needs to be addressed, that's been ignored, because we're spending so much time, you know, worrying about how tall our graph is. In any case, the other issue is the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee and other committees that are having difficulty being able to meet, to be able to meet the deadline for printing, as the interim town manager has mentioned, can be alleviated by, and I know this is an unpopular thing, and Mr. Jeffries, I agree, three months straight sitting in meetings, everybody needs a break. But when we have such critical matter in town, I think that it calls for members of boards, even though volunteer and elected, to step up and say, we need to hold two meetings this week, we need to hold three meetings this week, we need to address these matters, we need to give 48 hours' notice to the public, if we have to hold one on a Saturday, we'll have to do that for the benefit of the community. So, those are just my points that I wanted to make tonight, and, you know, for consideration. And I'm not saying that it's a requirement, I mean, we just had Congress say, we're not coming back to give you more money for hurricane funding. Have a nice day, we're on vacation. So, Mr. Jeffries, I do agree. It depends upon how serious the situation is, to whether or not you come back, and whether or not things have been managed properly. Which is basically what our Speaker of the House, Mr. Johnson, said at the federal level. He said, it's not important. We've given you plenty of money. You've squandered it, you've misapplied it, you've misappropriated it. We don't need to come back. You figure it out. We'll be back November 5th. And in that, I can respect that, Mr. Jeffries, with what you had to say about having time off. So I say that, if you have to take extra time, hold an extra meeting, to be able to meet deadlines, well, the fight is on. Sun Tzu is in the house. Thank you very much, be a time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any other public comments? I don't see any other public. All right. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. It is 9:36 PM, and the Select Board is adjourned. Thank you, everyone at home, for tuning in tonight. We'll see you next week. Have a good night.